Who will detail today's housekeeping arrangements?
Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards, the assembly point is Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participated in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Moves us on to apologies for absence. I believe we've just had apologies from the reserve member who wasn't able to come today. I can't see that there are any reasons to exclude the press or public from this meeting as it is a public meeting. Do any members have any declarations of interest on this matter? Excellent. Then, I say, introduce, we'll do some introductions. I'm David Barker, I'm chairing the subcommittee this morning. To my left are the members of the committee who will introduce themselves.
Good morning, Councilor Joe Otten.
Good morning, councillor Peter Gilbert.
And you will notice several other people sitting in the room today, they're the officers that are working with us, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
I'm Samantha Bonley, legal adviser to the subcommittee.
Good morning, I'm Jane Goff from Licensing, here to read the report this morning.
Joan Cooper, Democratic Services.
And could I ask, just to go down the table for people to introduce themselves, and if you could use the microphone when you speak and then switch it off afterwards both for recording and acoustic purposes, because my hearing is not fantastic.
Good morning, my name's Tom Rusling, we're the landlords of the property.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Mr Peter Ebbin, I'm the main labour tenant, thank you.
Morning, my name's Steve Lloyd, I live at number five Orbord Road and I've done for 35 years.
I'm Indus Singh, 79 Abbey Lane.
Kevin Naila, 53 Abbey Lane.
Again, Michelle Naila, I work at Abbey Lane School and also live at 53 Abbey Lane.
Thank you and welcome again. We have a set process for these hearings, which will be at the back of the papers if you have the papers, but we can notice at point four on that process, it says the solicitors of this committee will outline the procedure, so Sam, could you outline the procedure please?
All right, thank you, I'm already losing my voice, so I need all the help I can get. Yeah, so the procedure's right at the back of the pack, on page 73. So the licensing officer, who's Jane, will introduce the report this morning. If there are any questions concerning the report, they can be asked by members then, so if there's anything missing or factually inaccurate, then we can get that amended for the record. There are no representations from any of the responsible authorities, so we'll head straight over to the interested parties to detail their relevant representation, so whichever order you wish to go in, and everybody will be allowed ample maximum time in order to speak and address the committee. Members will have questions for the interested parties, and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant may also ask each of you questions where you have spoken. We'll then head over to the applicant, who'll be asked to detail the application, provide clarification on the application and respond to the representations made, both written in the report and orally at the hearing today. Again, members can ask the applicant question, and with the leave of the Chair, interested parties may also ask you questions. The applicant will then be given the opportunity to sum up the application, will take the options from Jane, which are detailed in the report already, and members will then go into private session to take legal advice and consider the application, so you are welcome to wait around and wait for that decision a little bit later on this morning if you wish, if not, it will be written out to you. And the decision of the licensing committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do that in open session as we are now, or closed, we would just ask you all to just pop back in the room while we have a discussion, and we'll then invite you back in and discuss what we basically were having a chat about. And as the Chair's already said, the hearing is public this morning and is being live webcast as we speak. That's everything, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Sam, so could we have the report then please, Jane?
You certainly can, good morning everybody and welcome to the committee this morning to determine the grant application for a premises licence for 37 Abbey Lane. The application was made by PPAA Retail Limited, received by the licensing service on the 22nd of October 24, and a full copy of which, with plans and any accompanying documents, are at Appendix A if you'd like to see that. So the application is for a premises to operate as an off licence store, the applicant has confirmed that the sale of alcohol hours are for consumption off the premises only, and it is for Monday to Sunday, 8am till 10pm daily. So the reasons for referral this morning is that we have outstanding objections from a local councillor, a petition that's been submitted on behalf of several local residents, several, a lot of local residents, and also six individual local residents with the school being included in that, as we've heard already. So the applicant, the petition lead and also all the interested parties have been invited to attend this morning, they're at Appendix C if you'd like to see that. And I'm just going to scoot through the report so we don't have to sit here all day and go to the appeals part that states that the Licensing Act 2003, section 181 and schedule 5 makes provision for the appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against the decision of the licensing authority to the magistrate's court. So the recommendations this morning Chair are that everyone, that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps as the subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Thank you Jane. Have members got any questions on the report at all? Do the applicants have any questions on the report? Are there any questions on the report from the interested parties? If not, then I will go across to the interested parties to put your objections to us this morning, and you can do that in whatever way you feel most appropriate, you all have the opportunity to speak if you wish.
If I can, is that okay, can you hear me okay? If I can just start by looking at the process where we've come from to get to where we are here right now. I understand that part of the process, which I'm not familiar with, I have to be honest, I'm just a layman like most of us are today, part of the process is that this was to be advertised in a local newspaper, now I don't know whether that's regional or governmental, and I'd like to ask the council what they regard as being a local newspaper, please.
Sam, would you like to provide some clarity on the legislation around this?
Yeah, there's nothing specifically in the legislation, but it's interpreted as a newspaper that circulated in the local vicinity, so within the city of Sheffield is how we take it to be, and circulated to residents or newsagents or the more market, I think quite a few of them are listed in as well.
So if we put that into context, the purpose of which, trying to be objective about this, is to inform the local community that this is a potential change to aspects of their local community. Now, my understanding of this is that this was advertised in, I believe, the Mercury Star or something like that. Nobody in our area gets that newspaper.
As far as I know, that's a reasonably common one for these to be advertised in alongside the notices that have to be displayed at the premises as well, and I believe that we were satisfied that the legal requirements for advertising the application were applied, otherwise we wouldn't be here today and we wouldn't be hearing the application.
So do you think it's reasonable that people that live four mile away were notified, because they were in the catchment area for that newspaper, they were notified via that newspaper, that means of communication, to let people know of an impending change to their community, but yet people that lived in that area weren't?
There's no legal requirement to notify people within a specific area, so it's quite different from planning in that regard, and there's quite a fair bit of case law behind it, if you're as interested in it as I am, you're probably not, I'm a little bit sad in that regard, but it does say that there is no requirement to notify people within the immediate vicinity or within a set sort of mileage. Obviously, the applicants do have to advertise, as you've pointed out, in the newspaper, but also on the premises as well, I think it's the blue notice that they put on the premises, so obviously a lot of you live quite close by to that, so they have...
So for what purpose then was it advertised in the newspaper? If it wasn't a newspaper that circulated in our area, if it wasn't standing back and being objective as a citizen to communicate the potential changes to people's lives, what was the purpose of doing it? Just to tick a box, to make it legal?
I mean, essentially, the legislation is getting on for about 20 years old now, so...
It's not my legislation, I didn't design the legislation, I'm here to contest it.
Nor did I, but unfortunately they have complied with the requirements. But it's not for us to rewrite the legislation, unfortunately.
So it's all right then, we'll just sit back and accept that as being okay?
Complied with the requirements of the legislation, we're satisfied it's a valid application, so that's why we're here today, if it wasn't, we could have sent it back.
Nobody that lives nearby has to be notified then, okay, that's fair enough. So moving on to the second aspect, sorry, would you like to speak?
I don't think there's a dispute that nobody has not been notified, that's what, so I accept your point, but we're not struggling that nobody has not been notified, you know, everybody is aware of it, there's a blue notice in the window, it's been in the, it's been in our paper, it's been all over Facebook, which is, you know, is as good as a paper these days, I think, so I don't really understand the point, because it has been broadcast...
My point is the process that's been followed, has been applied verbatim, and it's been a useless process, because nobody has been notified that lives in the area via the medium that the regional and local councils are supposed to follow.
So how are you all sat here today then?
Same here, I think we could be arguing, the legislation...
I'm sorry, I don't see your point at all.
The legislation is the legislation and it's been complied with, and we don't have any power to make people do anything over and above the legislation. We can encourage people to do it, and we do try and encourage it in most cases, because quite often that avoids us having to sit here and have these discussions. But the legislation is national, it's the law of the land at the moment, we as a council can't change that, if we deviate from that, we run the risk of legal challenge and finding ourselves in court by forcing applicants to do things over and above what the law says they have to do, and, you know, so here we are today as a result of that, and I think it's important that we actually get on to the reasons why you feel the application is unacceptable, as opposed to, we could all have a discussion, we could be here all day discussing the rights and wrongs of the current legislation.
That's part and parcel of it.
Your points are noted, but we're happy that it has been followed, so if you want to discuss how you think the application would undermine the licensing objectives, we're all happy to listen.
Well, I'll let, let's go down the line and people can put their points forward, and then we'll come back to me at the end if that's okay.
Yeah, but if it's going to be further on the point of the process, we're happy it's followed, so I don't see the need to discuss further.
It's absolutely the process.
But it has been followed.
It hasn't. The process hadn't been followed.
In your opinion?
Because you've not defined what local means, it says that it needs to be put in a local newspaper, define local.
There's no requirement to do a survey as to who receives or reads which newspaper, it's a locally circulating newspaper.
You can't define it, you can't define it, can you?
And it's an online newspaper.
You're not answering the question.
It's not defined in legislation, so I don't need to define it.
So what's the point in having it then?
I can understand both points, with Steve as well. On my perspective, I didn't find out until the Friday that weekend, so I've got a store myself, I didn't find out, so I can understand it's got a valid point, but I can understand the other side as well, that it was in the paper, but we only found out on the Friday that weekend when all the signatures were done and everybody had a feeling. Steve, you must have gone on your second point.
No, no, just second point, which is obviously going to be stone-rolled, is the fact that...
Oh, that's okay.
Is the fact that nowhere does it say, on the blue notice, the very informative piece of A4 paper, did it clearly say that people could object? You're going to say it said that people could make a representation. People don't know what making a representation means, and before you say it, there is a massive difference between a representation and an objection, and any piece of software will tell you that. So if the council decides to use those two words interchangeably, they're incorrect and so is the legislation.
I understand we've already discussed this in correspondence with you and it has been cleared up, so I don't see the need to do it any further.
There is a clear definition, a difference between representation and objection, and in nowhere does it say on that notice that people can object. So your Auntie Doris, that's got two kids that go to Woodseats, go to Abbey Lane School, looks at that notice and it doesn't tell her that she can object, it doesn't define what she can do. So there's a newspaper that she's not received and there's an A4 piece of paper on a wall that doesn't tell her she can object, so it's smokescreened, the process is smokescreened through. How can people who are part of the community be well informed to contest it when they don't even know what they're supposed to do, or it tells them what to do? It just doesn't, in any stretch of the imagination.
I think there are valid points there, and, you know, what tends to happen at these things, people do find out, they do come, and what you could, well, have come along today as someone that knows nothing about licensing legislation, have you said, and the applicant would have a barrister sat there who is an expert on the thing, and you make your own mind up whether that's a fair fight, but that's the way the law and the legislation stands at the moment. I personally, as someone who's been on this committee for a long time, do try and encourage people and inform people about what the processes are for licensing, but we as a council can only work within the legislation we've got, and as I say, we will find ourselves in court quite quickly if we start requiring applicants to do things over and above the legislation, we simply do not have that power to do that. You know, discussion on the Licensing Act and its merits and its pitfalls for another time, but the Act is the Act, it's been around, as Sam says, 20 years, and I accept that people don't always know about what's happening, and that when they do come, you know, it's very, very difficult to know what grounds you can object, what are valid points, you know, it's legislation, it's the law, people have studied this for years and years and have paid a lot to be experts in it, and, you know, as you say, your Auntie Doris may well not quite grasp what the situation is, it's not for...
That's what the notice and the notice in the newspapers, I'm assuming, is supposed to be for, so that people can look at it and go, hmm, that's going to affect our society, that's going to affect, and, and, and object to it, that's what it's for. Anyway, like you say, we're not going to change legislation, but you have to put things in context, and that to me, it just stinks, it really does, anyway, moving on.
Also, the other part of it is that the notices do have to be circulated to statutory authorities, so the police, safeguarding, environmental protection, people like that, have every opportunity to object to any application that comes in, so if, you know, if they've got serious concerns, at least some people, and they have their own departments that look at these things, so there is a bit of balance there, but, you know, I take your point, it's far from perfect.
Police say, sorry.
No, no representations from the police at all, they were happy with the application.
They're required to send it to them, so if they think that the application may lead to an increase or contribute to existing crime and disorder, as they do frequently, they put in representations, they put in an objection and they come before us, and this committee are well familiar with that process, they do.
But they didn't respond?
They didn't have any concerns over this application though.
So they didn't respond?
No, by not responding, they don't have concerns. I know as well on the notice, it does say to contact the licensing service for further information, and I know you know personally that they have guided people through this process and they do advise local residents and explain things to the best of their ability, and I know certainly Jane and a colleague have spent a lot of time going through this with you, so I don't intend to keep rehashing it this morning. People have given up a lot of valuable time to put across the points this morning, so I don't think we need to keep re-going over the same issue, but I do understand your concerns and we've taken them on board and they are a matter of record now.
Right, so, do you want to move on then? It looks like you're the next in line.
Hello again, my name's Haminda Singh, my wife's the postmaster for Abbey Lane, so I've got added interest in this, I'll tell you now in the first place. One of my reasons is because we've already got an off licence here, which has been there for 30, 40 years, serving the local community, there's no need for another one. We've noticed all the changes over the years on Abbey Lane, I've been there over 10 years myself, there's no, there's always so many hairdressers, so many things, and basically the trade is gone. Secondly, parking issues, you know, people have problems, everybody parks outside my shop, they go one draught to the other places, and a lot of my customers say to me that we can't park outside, hence we go down the road. The main issue, mine, is not the business, my main issue is the school. Hopefully my grandchildren are going to go to Abbey Lane School as well, I love the community, this is why I moved here. I don't want to see an off licence two doors away from the school. The children will pass that off licence all the time, it will cause a nuisance. I just put to you, Woodseats, down the road, we've had two off licences opened up in five years, I regularly go past Woodseats Road, you have people standing outside smoking, drinking, the nuisance, it will just come. You know, it's something that we cannot, we cannot get rid of, it will be there with an off licence. Abbey Lane is completely different to even Woodseats, nice quiet street, very nice lease, a bit upmarket. Main concern is, is the children will be going past this school to come to my shop, to any other shops which are further down the road, they'll see this kind of behaviour, and there's studies now that children as young as under 10 look at things with booze and whatnot. Second thing was my parking issue. Thirdly, is that public nuisance, is going to create a public nuisance? You go to any, any place and you see these off licences, you people see people outside smoking, drinking, and it causes bad behaviour. Now supermarkets, supermarkets have off licences, but it's a lot more control. Most of them are big, Astors, Spar, big companies. The off licence, even my off licence is in a designated area, where it's going to cause less nuisance to children. Far away from, say, when you walk into the shop and it's there right in front of you. Off licences create this problem, off licence is an off licence solely for booze. Two doors away from the school, I think someone would have to be mad to grant this premises licence. We say, what do we do, we protect our youngsters, that's what society's about, why do I work so hard for my kids? I don't want to see an off licence two doors away from the school. I don't want the extra traffic that it causes. Anyone who goes to off licence, they park outside or grab their bottle of wine or whatever they're going to, and in and out, it's going to cause a nuisance. The main issue for me is the school, schoolchildren. All the schoolchildren, if you look on Abbey Lane, they come from that school, they walk down, they come to us and they buy their sweets, they're going to see the off licence, they're going to see the nuisance. Just yourselves, just go down Woodseats Road, just have a look outside. Go somewhere around 8 to 10 o'clock in the evening, you'll see what kind of situation it's caused there. Secondly, this is not just an issue with myself and a few local shops. We only found out about this on that weekend, on that Friday, when the deadline was for Monday. Within a weekend, we had 300 signatures. Local residents. This is very strong, I mean, you know, lots of people were going to come down today and all they said to me was, Sid, you go and we'll voice, you know, and voice our concerns. But that petition, 300 odd signatures over a weekend, it's strong. Secondly, five shopkeepers have come to me, mentioning no names, including myself, we're ready not to pay rates anymore. If this licence is granted, I won't pay my rates, and I won't pay, five or 10 shops will not pay their rates, because we feel this strongly. I've never not paid a bill in my life, I've been working since I was 16. Now, my rates are around 20,000 a year, I don't know what this shopkeeper's going to pay, I've got no clue. When you're going to, council's going to lose 100 odd thousand in rates, okay, this is how strongly we feel. I'm going to discuss it with the shopkeepers, they came to me, I didn't go to them, they came in the shop, Sid, this is how strongly we feel, we've had enough with all these people just opening up, hairdressers opening up, there's no diversity, we used to have a chemist, we used to have this, and there's no trade there anymore. People come and have their hair cut and go off. My sales used to be, I won't mention the figure, but they're half to what they used to be within five years. Obviously Covid's had an issue, if you councillors are not going to help us, what are we going to do? We want diversity, we've got an off licence here, we've been serving the community for 30, 35 years, we've got no need for another one. But my main issue is, I don't want an off licence two doors away from a public school, a big public school, and that's my main concern. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, that's helpful.
My name is Sumajit Kaur, I'm postmistress from Spar Abbey Lane. We are serving communities since last 10 years, I'm postmistress since last 10 years. We are connected to local people, but lots of local our customer, they're all, anybody's sons, grandsons, everybody goes to Abbey Lane School. The petition we signed is all of our local customer, which one, they don't want schools next door to school, they all, they always need post office, the post office here for them to help, we help local community and they come to us. But that's why so much objection, just over the weekend on the petition they signed, because it's all our local customer, which is come together, they don't want an off licence to be granted next door to school, and they don't want to lose post office either, because no bank's around, nothing, you know, I mean, it will affect local business and as well as our stores as well.
That's one of the big reasons, sorry as well, with the post office, the post office serves the community, and basically if that closes, what's going to happen? You know, this is a big issue for you councillors, it's not just a small issue about an off licence opening up, we're on now on the floor already. What kind of thing's going to happen? Can you imagine the uproar when this post office closes? Because that's where you're going, that's the route that you're going. Another business of the same will be taking some of the trade away, and it's kind of all to have any trade going away. And remember, we've served this community, this post office has been there for 20, 30 years, no one's listening anymore to us granting licences, it used to be, years ago, used to have a three year mile radius, if I'm correct, from what I remember years and years ago. Nowadays, anyone opens up a shop wherever they want, willy-nilly, I wouldn't go and open up a shop on another day when someone's doing the same thing, it's a very strong issue. We're literally on the floor, Covid took a lot of the trade away, my books can be available to any councillor, they're welcome, it's affiliated with Spar, so all the accounts can be available for you guys as well. Sorry, I just wanted to put that point in as well. My apologies for that.
Thank you.
And please move on?
Yes, I'm Michelle Naila, I'm the Buildings Officer at Abbey Lane Primary School, where I've worked for 25 years, also I live on the site of the school, the caretaker's house also for 25 years. We have almost 600 pupils at that school, and obviously, that amount of parents bringing children to and from school in the morning, it's very difficult to cross roads with cars parked on junctions, and the first junction being the nearest one, which is the proposed site of the off licence. I think it'll be a real danger to children in lots of ways, trying to gain their independence when they're coming to the end of being at primary school and they want to bring themselves to and from school, or we are going to allow them to be walking past, potential unsightly things, shall we say, in the morning, in an afternoon, are they going to be able to cross the road, there's going to be deliveries, there's going to be people parking to go in, it's not something you really need on the doorstep of school. Between Abbey Lane Primary School, and I know this is of no concern and doesn't come up in the objections, and I can't understand why, between Abbey Lane Primary School and Woodseats Primary School, there are eight bars and pubs, there are four off licences, and there are, there are three supermarkets. It's a 10 minute walk maximum, that's if you're dawdling and counting, which sell alcohol within those same hours as this proposed off licence does, which is from 8am to 10pm. I think it will be a big detriment, a huge detriment to the area. A massive detriment would be if Sid loses his shop, which contains the post office, the two banks that... The two banks that were at side of the Spar have both closed and gone. It's the only financial institution, if you like, where people can go, where people trust people, where the elderly can go who still like to withdraw their pension and not be frightened of potentially people hanging about on the streets that weren't there before. I don't, I don't, I don't know what else we can say to make you understand how difficult it would make it be. We, we have huge grassed areas outside school which are littered with bottles and cans. You know, after a weekend anyway, do we want more of this? I don't think we do. I really don't think we do. Thank you.
Sorry, just a point, just a reminder. To the local community. My store was twenty-four hours, twenty-four hour off licence when we brought the store maybe ten years ago. So basically, customers came in to me saying that we're getting woken up because there's all flats on top of the shops. We're getting woke up at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, it's a nuisance. There was fights outside the shop. Um, police were regularly called, bad behaviour. Within the space of ten months, I shut the twenty-four hours. Now, can you imagine how much trade I lost and how much I lost? So it's not all about money. Let me make that point clear to you. It's about the community as well. I closed the twenty-four hours and we only opened from seven till nine in the evening. Now, that was a big commitment solely because local residents were complaining about the issues. Now, I'm willing to make that kind of commitment, about time you guys made the same kind of commitment to our area. Thank you. Is there anything you'd like?
Yeah, could I just add one more thing? Uh, it was, it was an article I read from one of our local residents and shopkeepers which said, and I didn't know this, uh, that there is a caveat on that block which states those shops there cannot sell food or have late night openings. And then there's the other one where when a, a micro pub was opening as close to Woodseats School as this shop is proposed to be to Abbey Lane School, it was restricted from selling alcohol while school was open. So I think at least a bit of a precedent has been set there by saying a premises selling alcohol cannot operate within school opening hours. So this micro pub cannot sell alcohol pre four PM. And I think that has also got to be taken into consideration. If that works down there, if, and I hope it doesn't go through, that this licence premises becomes a reality, then that should be a stipulation also. That alcohol cannot be sold during school opening hours. Thank you.
That's right.
Also, the council some years ago decided to let the lorries drive straight up Abbey Lane and drive up through Meadowhead to wherever they go into destinations, whatever. They used to turn around at the roundabout and go up Bocking Lane, which you'll find. The school went from four hundred children to six hundred and fifty children. We've got forty tonne lorries coming up. We've got buses, buses coming up frequently. We've got Sid here, he needs to get his goods into his shop.
Got a really tight junction.
It's, it's near to the end of the junction. When, when lorries can't get in, they double park, which is causing a big problem. People have been knocked over there outside. It's a very, very dangerous road, especially with kids coming on the road to school. There's a big danger adding more lorries coming to a new shop. Another beer off and selling whatever he wants to sell, that's fine. But it's not going to help the problem with the lorries, with the kids being safe. You're making it more and more difficult by allowing this licence. I'd like to see the allowance, this licence revoked as a resident of Abbey Lane. And I'm talking about all the people on Abbey Lane, the three hundred and odd people that have objected to it. They all know the problems, we know them, you don't.
We live with them.
And obviously, I object to the fact that the paperwork were put in the window of this shop just as the school were, were closing down for the six weeks holidays.
October half term.
October half term holidays. So all the people that brought the kids didn't have a chance to see that. And it were a very short timescale. I know that years ago, you had to have something like three months at least showing that people could make objections if they needed to make objections, they could. That's not the case anymore. So saying that, well, we're putting in, in local press and, and things like that and on, on Facebook. I'm seventy-one, I don't, I don't use a computer, I can't use it. So I have no idea, I have had no idea about it. Some, uh, friends of ours came up Abbey Lane, have you seen that notice in the window? It's that, it was that small, people were walking past, they didn't understand it was here. Now, that is not the way to run this situation properly. The situation wasn't, wasn't dealt with properly from the beginning up to, right up to now. And we're hoping we can resolve that situation now. We don't want this shop to open. It's going to cause more hassle. I spend a lot of my time picking litter up outside Abbey Lane School. There's a lot of grass there, there's a bench where kids congregate already. And I see them drinking and I, and I have to go out and pick litter up. It's, it's not, it's not very nice, I shouldn't have to do that. I keep the grass cut out on the verge outside because I like to keep it clean. The council come and obviously there isn't the money to come as often as they'd like to do. But I keep mine cut every two weeks. It gets littered, I have to go and pick it up, I pick it up front to school. There's a bin at the bus stop, doesn't get used. There's a bench in the middle of nowhere. It's ridiculous, the bench shouldn't be there. If they want a bench, put it where the bus shelter is and also where the bin is. It's, it's just crazy. So even contemplate putting a beer off on Abbey Lane that close to school and with all the traffic we've got, it's a hell of a lot of traffic coming out of Derbyshire. And half of one, I don't want to see it.
Don't, don't believe us, just come and see it. Don't believe anything we say, but come and see it, you'll make your mind up. Come when school's turning in and turning out and just be an object, just look at it. Just judge by your own eyes. That's all we're asking. We're all coming at this from a different angle, I know. But don't, don't believe what we say. Go and have a look yourselves, that's all we're asking.
So as a committee, we have no reason to doubt what you say. You're local residents, you say you're the experts in your area. We're here to consider whether allowing this licence would impact on the four licensing objectives, which are things that you're now familiar with, aren't you? You've probably never heard of the licensing objectives before. And, and that's our job as a committee. Your job as interested parties to tell us how it's going to impact on those objectives. It's the applicant's job to tell us how they're going to manage it in a way that it doesn't impact on, on, on those objectives. And then based entirely on what both sides have told us today and what's in the report and having to take account of the legislation, we, we will come to a decision. You know, you offered to show us your accounts, I did see your accounts. I don't doubt what you, you're telling me this morning. It's not necessary to go into that level of detail. We don't think people come here and tell us lies, we think you come and tell us the truth, so. That, that, that's why we're here and that's what we'll be doing. Is there anything else you'd like to add before I open this up to questions?
No, not from Michelle.
No, we find, thank you.
Just one other thing about the parking. Where this shop is going to be, there are flats above it. The people in these flats all have vehicles, they all park in that layby, which is their, their right to do so, anyone can park there. But they park there, it is always full. So can you imagine when deliveries are being made to this proposed shop? The upheaval it's going to make. It's going to be double parking again. It's bad enough on Abbey Lane and through Woodseats, as it is caused by Sheffield City Council closing roads here, there and everywhere. Everything has to come down through Woodseats or go on Abbey, Abbeydale Road. I suffer, I've got pulmonary fibrosis. I have to walk through the backwax, I can't walk down Woodseats because of the, the fumes. Standing traffic and standing traffic on Abbeydale Road. I've been driving around Sheffield for a lot of years. I've lived in Sheffield seventy-one years. I've lived on Abbey Lane for twenty-five years. Beautiful place to live and I think the way it's going at the minute, it's going downhill if you let this go through.
Thank you, that, that's been really helpful. So I'll open this up to questions then now. And may remember, you will have the chance to come back at the end and sum up. So if there's anything, something, oh, I wish I'd mentioned this or that, there will be another opportunity for you. So you can get every chance. Joe, do you want to start us off with questions? Is there anything you'd like to ask the interested parties?
There we go, thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, thank you all for coming. I have some, a number of questions, I'm not quite sure who they're for, following from the discussion that we've had. So my, my understanding, I think, I'd like officers to correct me if I go wrong on this, is that kind of the relevant licensing objectives here are the prevention of crime disorder and the protection of children. And we're not, it's not in our gift to consider issues like parking and competition to other shops. Is that, is that, is that correct? I'm getting, I'm, I'm, I'm getting nods in here. So I appreciate, you know, without doubting anything you say about parking, but without doubting anything you say about the, the, you know, the threats to other, other businesses in the area. That's not something I don't, as I understand, we can legally consider.
Although unless any of those fall into public news.
Fall into public news, yes, exactly. However, so, so if I can sort of kind of draw out what you're saying about protecting children and prevention of crime disorder, I suppose the question then is, and I don't know if there's anything you want to add on this, but it's possibly also a question for officers. How we, um, what kind of standard of evidence I suppose we need that a, an off licence is responsible for the behaviour kind of outside it. Uh, I'm aware, for example, that we have a, a big issue with behaviour in the city centre and there's a question of whether people arriving early to, to buy alcohol are a part of the, um, part of the issue there, or whether they bring their own alcohol and drink it in the city centre anyway. And I'm aware, sorry, Jane, sorry, Jane, to be on the spot, I've, I've emailed you recently about this exact issue, haven't I? For, um, some advice. Um, is, is, is there, is, do we have grounds in this meeting to consider attaching potential antisocial behaviour to an off licence if it happens outside it? But caused by people we think have just bought alcohol within it?
It's difficult because once the, once the person has left the premises, they're not in that premises anymore. So there is a grey area in the legislation that states how much responsibility the, the premises has to control people outside of the premises. It's the same as if people left a pub and were walking down the street causing noise and crime and disorder, whatever. That wouldn't come to the responsibility of the pub to keep them in the order because they've already left the premises and they've, they've moved away. But the immediate vicinity around the premises, I would, I don't think it's a legal matter, but Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is an expectation of due diligence by the licence holder to ensure that whatever products they sell or whatever they do doesn't cause a problem within that immediate different, vicinity of the shop because that's part and parcel of maintaining the objectives, that, that whatever he's, he or they or she's doing or selling or whatever, doesn't cause that problem to happen. Does that make sense?
Thank you, yeah, yeah. That makes sense, thank you. Um, so the, the other question, uh, protection of children from harm, I just wanted to explore this for a moment. So the proposal is for, for an off licence within, was it two hundred yards, I saw in the paper somewhere, of a, of a school? I think two doors was a, it was that, was that a?
Basically it's free.
A rhetoric device.
Free houses away.
Three houses away, okay. So, I mean, the council is attempting, I just wondered, forgive me indulging in a, in a, in a hobby horse of mine. The council is attempting to bring in a policy that restricts the ability to open a hot food takeaway within eight hundred metres of a school on the grounds that these, these are harmful to children. And it does strike me that if that is a reasonable policy, which I'm, I'm going to say I'm against that policy, but, you know, the council is trying to do it. If that is a reasonable policy, then surely, uh, uh, surely, you know, alcohol, tobacco, gambling, let's say, for the, just to complete this gambling pornography are more, more dangerous to children than hot food from a takeaway. If it is reasonable for us to consider that a hot food takeaway is a terrible thing to have within eight hundred metres of a school, surely an off licence within two hundred metres by the same standard is a danger to children and, and there's grounds to object there. Is that, would that be a, a re- a reasonable course of argument?
So could you just pop yours off for me? Like, that's great, thank you. It's twofold, I guess. We've not got any representations from the statutory body in charge of safeguarding. So as you will also know, council, that that does happen where there are concerns that the protection of children objective might be undermined. So if there are concerns about that, I think in terms of the hot food takeaway and takeaways generally, it's coming from more of a public health perspective, which we do tend to stray into. It's tricky with licensing because it covers so many different things. So you have got the public health concerns and you've got planning concerns, none of which we can really take into account. But if there are concerns that an additional premises selling alcohol, for example, as in this situation, would lead to children being harmed or put at risk of harm. And, you know, you use your own local knowledge to determine that and listen to the local residents who have first hand knowledge of that and determine that is the case. Then, then that's the way you'd go with that application.
Okay, I think that's a, yeah, okay. So I mean, my question to the, to the interested party, I suppose, is given what you've just heard, is there anything else you can give us in terms of protection of children? Or, uh, what was the other, antisocial behaviour? Uh, is there anything you'd like to add on those two particular points, given, given what you've just heard?
Licensing, when you go for your premises licence, you, um, you are tall, underage drinking. And that question about outside, we have a responsibility. If someone comes into our shop who's already looks, um, quite drunk, we're not supposed to serve them. Now, if he goes outside, drinks that bottle, comes back in, I'm not going to serve him. So we do have an obligation. A licence is not willy nilly, which is given out to anyone. We do, our due diligence here. So we have got that responsibility. With regards to your questions about children, it goes hand in hand. It will be a nuisance to his children. They will see these guys drinking outside off licences. They will have these issues direct with the children. Children's safety and a nuisance it will create. It's too close to the school. Now, if this was down the road, say where I am, for example, excuse me, you've got, you ever got that issue, right? And the other thing is, it's a big store, off licence is hidden away, you know? You've got Spar affiliated company which has so many rules. You've got your tills. On the tills it says to check if this person is eighteen, if he's twenty-one rule. We already have our due diligence. This is where my concern, my main concern comes. I've told you, I stopped my twenty-four hour licence within ten months of buying the shop because I even saw it was a nuisance for local residents. Now, this is too close to the school. It's too close to the school. I mean, I've got my objectives, you, obviously you, you guys know as well. I don't want another off licence opening up up the road. There's not enough room for us both. But my main issue is, it's too close to the school, it's going to create a nuisance. You go anywhere where there's off licences, you'll see people hanging around outside. I mean, I'll take a video for, if you like, for you, for you guys. The nuisance, children's safety is the biggest concern here. It's too close to the school. So it is an issue basically, sorry.
If, if you put it in context and look at it logically, we're now reaching a day and age where tobacco, for example, it's been hidden from people's view. So when you go into a lot of shops, I don't know the laws, but there's covers covering the tobacco and, and certainly in Australia, the, the tobacco had to have a nondescript package on it. And that's obviously to protect people. It's to, and it's, it's kind of going against advertising. So that will come in due course of time. So that will come in due course of time, probably within my lifetime where that's gonna happen. Also with things like vapes and things like alcohol. So as Sid quite rightly says, for, if you put it in context and imagine your child or your grandkid or your great-grandkid walking straight out of school and walking straight within eyesight of, which has to be advertised, just nobody would know it were there. It, it's gonna have an impact on young minds. That's why we're doing things like stopping advertising of tobacco products in supermarkets, in off-licences. So you have to put that into context and think to yourself, and, and the point that you made about, um, uh, food. Why are we bringing this in? To do this would just to be facing all that logic in its face and saying, no, well, that don't really matter.
I'd just like a bit more clarity about, you, you've mentioned various things in and around here. What, what's life like now? You know, what was the situation you've got at the moment? Just, just so that in the context of opening this, how much worse would that become or, you know?
So one of the main things I think at the moment is you look out of the window of school and you think, right, which way shall I try and go to get off Abbey Lane? Shall I head to Woodseats? Because all you can see is standing traffic. Or shall I try the Abbeydale Roadway? Or do I want to try Bocking Lane Way? Because it's just standing traffic most of the day. You used to get it at rush hour. Well, rush hour now, it's a, it's a rush day. It's just a rush day. Like Kevin says, there's a thirty-five tonne lorries that can come up and down Abbey Lane during school time at night. Apparently they can't. You wanna tell them that. But, you know, during the day we have the lorries, we have the buses, we have the parents who like to park in bus lanes and on zig-sides and, you know, they don't abide by all the rules like everyone else. They need to drop their child off. And I, I, and I think the impact of traffic and the dangers to children and the dangers to our crossing warden the other day are just gonna amplify, particularly when it comes to children crossing the roads on their own, trying to gain some independence, or the one that just flies and goes between traffic. People don't know, that's red and I'm on a junction, I won't park there. They go, ooh, that's a space, I'll park there. And they're right outside these shops and on the junctions where the children and parents with a pram and a toddler and the, you know, the childminders who are trying to corral, like herding crows, you know, ten children on the way home to look after. It's eyes in the back of your head. It is a lovely place. It's not as lovely as it used to be. It's really not.
Can I just check, is, is there much in the way of antisocial behaviour? I know you, you've mentioned people drinking in cans in front of the school and things. How prevalent is that at the moment?
Well, I've had antisocial behaviour outside school where I've gone out of an evening and I've had like five young lads wanted to attack me outside on the pavement.
And then we give over after that.
I went into the house and I phoned the police. This was at night, probably about eleven o'clock, we were just going to bed. I was threatened. When I phoned the police, didn't wanna know. I can't see if there's any issues arising from this place opening, if there's any antisocial behaviour. The police are not gonna react to it. All they bother about is looking for the motorist, which is the easy target where they can make money for the council and for themselves. They will not come out to anything like that. There's a lot of things they don't get involved with. Car theft, car theft. We've had several vehicles stolen on Abbey Lane.
Breaking into houses, stealing keys, getting cars.
The police don't wanna know. They come out, they go away and that's the end of it. Our neighbour actually found out that his car, which had been stolen the night before, was up in Leeds. So he had to phone the police and tell them exactly where his car was. Fortunately, he got a tracker. The Leeds Police Force went and sorted it out. Otherwise, they weren't bothered, they weren't gonna go and sort it out. We have CCTV which I put on around my house. School has CCTV, about nineteen cameras, don't you?
Yeah. We've got a safe bidding for safeguarding because schools too open. We are fenced, but we are easily accessible by, you know, climbing over the fence. Great spot for people to come and hide in the shelters and doorways and do whatever they like around school. Twenty-one cameras, doesn't put them off, doesn't put them off. We've got, we, we're gonna end up looking like a prison instead of the beautiful frontage of the school that it is. But we have to protect our children and we are gonna do our best and we need other people to do their best for us to help.
And the other point about the school, the school has been struggling for a number of years. We've now got people in place that are trying to sort the school out, trying to get the intake up. I don't think by allowing this to, to go forward, that it's gonna help the school progress forward and bring the kids in. Because I can't see parents with any responsibility to their kids saying, well, we're good to Abbey Lane because it's got all these beer-offs there and we've got, we've got to get past all this lot. We don't need it. It's not required. I'm sure he'd like to open it and otherwise he won't be, he, he wouldn't be going through this process. But there are other places to open a, a beer-off, a shop, selling other goods. There are plenty of other places. Abbey Lane, unfortunately, is not the place. And all the people around Abbey Lane and on Abbey Lane say they don't want it. The three hundred signatures plus tell you that. So that's my argument with it. So it's, it's, it's down to you guys to do the right thing by the people in Abbey Lane and the surrounding area. And the local people that have got business, as he like said. He doesn't wanna lose his shop. We don't want to lose his shop. And we don't wanna lose the post office, which will be a consequence of it. So you, there's a lot to think about. I'd, I'd like to think I could walk away from here and trust you people to do the right thing and not just think, I'll just forget that. We don't care. You don't live there. If this place were gonna open next door to you, you wouldn't want it. One hundred percent you wouldn't want it. So think about that and think about us. We don't need it. I certainly don't need it. I'm seventy-one, I don't wanna have to go outside confronting youths with bottles and cans, which I know for a fact I'm gonna get. So it's, it's down to you.
Can I just check, just the final thing for me. To what extent is this about this being a premises that sells alcohol? As opposed to if you opened up selling absolutely any, anything else?
It's about the alcohol and the, the problems that that will bring.
And plus, we've got Sid already there selling everything that this chap wants to sell. Why do we need it? Why do you want to even consider giving, giving the licence to that shop? It's been an air dresser for twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years it's been an air dresser. But of course now there's more air dressers than anything on Abbey Lane and Woodseats. And so this will be the next thing. Air dressers can't survive now, so we'll move on and make it the off-licences.
I think you're creating a big carbon clear if this goes through. We don't need it.
Thank you. Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask the interested parties?
I'm at it now. Can I just check from your perspective, obviously you work at the school, is the representation endorsed by the school as well? Okay, so obviously we've got the post office sort of round the corner from this proposed premises. I imagine you do quite well off the school kids and, and such coming to the area. Do you have any issues with kids, sort of any ASB or crime or general nuisance, anything like that? So it, it's not sort of the position that the kids are just gonna be coming from one side past this proposed premises if it's an off-licence? I'm assuming they come from all directions. I appreciate as you stood facing the school, more to the right is residential purely and then to the left is more, there are a couple of businesses, there's the takeaways, there's a few things like that. Yeah, there's more houses, yeah. Do you get people coming directly to your shop, sort of kids before school, kids after school?
Yes, we do. Basically, where the school is, it's all on the right-hand side. Our shop's on the bottom of the road on the right-hand side. So from the school, they walk, they will walk past this prospective off-licence and then they come to us. So basically, four to six and whatnot. So the, the football is basically gonna go past that, the school football. If you look on a four o'clock in the afternoon, all the kids walk past there and down to us.
Yeah, which is what you're saying about your business because they'd have no need to go round the corner. They could just potentially be at this proposed premises and wouldn't go any further.
That's right.
And then obviously your concern with it being near to the school and all the problems that brings. You, obviously you've mentioned some issues about the litter, people loitering, drinking, things like that. Have you had anything at the spa or at the post office, any issues like that? I know you said previously with a twenty-four hour licence.
Yes, basically, that was one of the issues as well. With the twenty-four hour licence, it was nuisance, basically. I mean, I, I was living upstairs and I noticed all the problems as well. So there was an issue of nuisance, fights and bottles being left outside. That's my main reason why I just closed the twenty-four hour off-licence. My same concern again is this off-licence, any off-licence does create that. It, it just, it just happens. To manage it, it's not easy. So my, only, my only solution was to shut the twenty-four hours. I mean, I tried other things, putting bins out, talking to them outside, it just doesn't work. It, it, the off-licence creates this kind of.
It comes with the territory.
It comes with the territory. It's a, off-licence is a drinking abbey. It's a total abbey where, you know, um, hard to explain. The only way I stopped it was stopped my twenty-four hour licence. Well, not stopped the licence, sorry. Stopped selling it twenty-four hours.
And there have been no issues since?
No issues since. It's just, within say three, four months, it's really good, really good outside the shop, no problems, no, no.
And with the other licensed premises in the area, so you've got a couple of bars and takeaways or things that we licence, do you have any issues with those in the area?
No, mainly there's a pub, um, across the road. There's only one pub on that Abbey Lane, I believe. And basically they're quite good, you know, um, they've always been really good. All the managers have been really good. Never had any issues there really, to be honest.
Can I just quickly say, the, um, we all know what children are like. If there's these flashing lights on outside these shops, and that's what quite a few have got, the, um, off-licences on Woodseats. The children will gather, whether they're old enough to drink, whether they actually want to drink. There's lights, there's people, it's lively. And just children, I'm saying children, teenagers congregating can cause intimidation and fear to people just going about their normal evening lives. It doesn't necessarily have to be the fact that they are the ones outside or drinking. It's somewhere to congregate. The lights are on, they're there.
Do you get any problems at your premises with that?
We do, occasionally. It's a lot better now, basically, when the lights are, we, we only opened until nine o'clock. But we still do have issues. I mean, I have to go out on a regular basis in the evening around seven, eight o'clock. There's, um, people drinking outside. I move them off, so you can't drink outside. Children, a lot of children hang around. I don't know, I think they're just attracted to all these bright lights.
It's as simple as that, yeah.
It's just, so I've reduced that, basically. So I'll go out there and tell them. So I've had a bit of grief of it, but I try and do as much as I can because it is my responsibility as well outside, rather than just passing the buck to anyone else. And you, you, we have had it, we have issues. We still have them now, but not, not to the extent it used to be.
And have the school ever raised any concerns with you about maybe kids?
Only the school parents that come in. Um, one day, this is about a month ago, there was two lads standing outside the shop. I can't remember if they had a beer in their hand or, or if it wasn't. I can't, I can't remember now. And they were causing an issue, basically. So I went outside and I've moved them off. It's a regular occurrence with that sort of thing. There's a lot of responsibility. Most people don't take responsibility with an off-licence, but it's a big, big, big responsibility. I mean, if we're gonna profit from alcohol, it's our responsibility to make sure that we do our job properly. It's not just sell alcohol, like most of these little shops do.
Maybe not an entirely appropriate question, you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, but I imagine that alcohol sales are a large portion of your business that make it viable and successful.
It's not, um, I'll be truthful with you, it's not as brilliant as it should be. Normally, you say, you could say a third of your sales will be alcohol. Here it's only about twenty percent, but still quite a significant amount, but it's not what we rely on completely. It will make an effect, obviously, with alcohol, with another shop opening up. I mean, the sales have to come from somewhere, don't they? They're gonna come from my shop, so it will make an impact, but, you know.
Thank you, that's helpful. We get a lot of sort of different licensed premises, either existing or new applicants. And it's good to sort of build the picture of the different areas as, as to how that looks. So that, that is really helpful. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do the applicants have any questions for the interested parties? At this stage it's just questions because it'll be over to you to state your case and respond to these. So if you've no questions, then it's your opportunity to detail your application and respond to the concerns that have been expressed?
Thank you for the opportunity. First, I, I take this as an opportunity actually when, when become, when a bit, uh, commercial space become available. So I was looking for a, for a start, a business and this is, this is one of them is very close to, close to my area. This is why I had to, I had to make a start. I thought would be ideal, ideal, um, uh, uh, business. The reason is, I, I worked in retail for almost eighteen years in various roles and it's only, only job I know is, is retail. So I can only work in retail or I can start, start a business in a retail. I am currently managing two twenty-four hours, um, fuel station around that area. One in Meadowhead and one, one on the Chesterfield Road, uh, the next to the, uh, the retail park. So basically, I'm having, uh, uh, lots of roles in controlling, uh, selling alcohol, being a DPS for both sides and twenty-four hours. I've been doing this for the last ten years and never had a problem. Uh, my record is very clean. We have a good training programme and staff, uh, trainings. Uh, and obviously, as you said, uh, all alcohol is stored in designated place. So this is what I can promise that with all the alcohol licensing objectives, I know because it's in my heart, I have a, a increased extended responsibility to meet these responsibilities, objectives. This is my priorities. Because of having this experience, I, I know this, uh, the public safety, uh, children protection and not selling to, uh, what is called is a challenge twenty-five. That is the only thing I can promise you that, uh, opening a new off-licence is not guaranteeing that we are gonna sell alcohol to the underage people, especially working this industry for very long. Especially work in this industry for a very long time. The reason I, I feel like is a fair that I'm just looking for opportunity, not thinking that I'm going to be determined to this, uh, community. Uh, because I have a primary responsibility. I have kids, two kids. Um, this is, this is something, you know, eh, whatever the role I'm doing it. I have not had any single problem selling to underage people or drunken people or, uh, proxy purchase or whatever. Because I know, I have a wide knowledge of this area, so I can control it, I can manage it. And, uh, I can, I can supervise the whole things. Uh, this is the only thing, you know, I want to communicate, uh, uh, this is an opportunity to me. Uh, I'm just one among the million people just looking for opportunity. Uh, so I believe that as a citizen of this company, country, as a, as a, as a active member of this community. I ha, I have, I have, I have, uh, I'm, I, I believe that, uh, I should be given the opportunity. Uh, more than anything, I believe that I live in Norton Lees and my son goes to Pr- Mandela Primary School, there's a big co-op. Very close to the, uh, primary school, it's very close proximity. And when we were driving back to Chesterfield Road before that, Derbyshire Lane is what, another, uh, off licence shop. Very close to, um, uh, Missborough Community School. So I, 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 I have seen quite a lot of off licences, um, um, very close to, uh, uh, schools, primary school and secondary school. It's not that I'm not, I'm defending that, but although the, the reason when I choose this, uh, this, uh, at the proper dispense to open a, uh, open a, uh, off licence shop. I knew that there's a school, I knew that there's a school, but it's not something that I think that my shop is not going to be, eh, have any impact on, any, any negative impact on the community. That is, that is something I am responsible for everything. Uh, or if anything goes wrong, uh, it won't, but the, the authorities are here to just supervise, monitor and obviously issue the penalties and everything. That's what I'm saying then. I've worked in eighteen years, I never had any single, managing two B C fuel station, two twenty-four hours off licence. You can check my records, I had so many test purchases, I have passed it. I never had single records of failing or any disputes. I am good at managing and I have a responsibility, so probably uh, definitely I will meet all these three points. So it's going to be lots of mission, uh, lots of control system. CCTVs and obviously designated places for storing alcohol, like sprits is going to be behind the counter. And obviously the alcohol is going to be very, uh, uh, within, within the supervision of the staff. So it's going to be on the same side of the, um, uh, on the counter. So all the shop plans is ready. Uh, uh, and as I said, if any kids, uh, drinking outside al- underage or proxy purchases or anybody who's drunken will not be allowed to buy alcohol. And all challenge twenty-five will be checked, all staff will be well trained, all CCTV available, uh, to check all the records. And all the, all the measurements, uh, will be, uh, in a well place. And I'm the designated, uh, premise supervisor. I am respa- responsible for all these, uh, all for these li- licensing, uh, conditions. Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to add before I open it up for questions?
Not, not really. The only thing is there definitely isn't a covenant on that building that prevents alcohol being sold.
No, it didn't say alcohol, late night opening.
Okay, I'll rephrase it. There isn't a covenant on that building.
Now, the lady who put that in her writing is, I don't know if she still works for Sheffield City Council. But she's, um, very well known in the local community for running wood seats, um.
Festival.
Yeah, festival, and she's very knowledgeable and has lived in the area for a long time, so I wouldn't think that it was something she would have got wrong. She must think there's something in that. I'm not saying you're wrong, but Angela would have made that point. Yeah. So there is not a covenant then, is that what you're saying?
No, I was just, I was, I'd personally checked that because that, that information was fed through as part of the objections process. And I did, I did take some steps to find that information out and I was told there was nothing in place, so, okay.
You, you, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicants very shortly. First. Do you want a pen? Go on, I'll bring you a pen round. Taking someone's eye out in the meeting would not be advisable. That's all right. I'm sure it was probably free. I'm probably will have been free, I've got one, one of the same. So I'll open this up to questions then now. Pete, would you like to start it off? Do you have any questions for the applicants?
No, I don't, thank you.
Joe?
Uh, thank you, yes, just one. Um, you, you say you're, you're currently the designated premise supervisor for two of the establishments selling alcohol, the both, both petrol stations, yeah, yeah. And, and this would be a third.
Second?
This would be a third. You'd, you'd then have, you'd have three.
It's, it's like, it's a franchise, it's not my own business, it's like a commission operator.
But you'd be the DPS for three businesses?
Yeah.
That is the intention?
I, I might give up one if I, if I open this one.
Well, uh, the, the, my next question is how many, how many, how many premises do you think you can reasonably be the DPS for? What would you, what would your requirement be?
Currently, two.
Yeah, but how many, how many, how many are you capable of running and, and being the DPS for at the same time and, and fulfilling the obligations of that?
Second, I, I.
How many separate premises do you consider yourself capable of, of being the DPS for at the same time?
It's just, uh.
What, what, what he's saying is, is, are you capable of doing three?
Yeah.
If you take this one on?
Yes.
But at the same time, could you do four?
I, I don't have any idea of course.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jane, can I ask what, what the normal, the normal workload for DPS in terms of expectations do we have in licensing?
Uh, there is an, eh, again, this is where the legislation is quite woolly in that it doesn't state. It just says you have to have day-to-day control of a premises or to be able to have day-to-day control to be DPS. There's nothing anywhere that states that you can't have more than one. And there isn't a set limit either. There's nothing anywhere that states that. So they've just got to be able to prove that they have, they are capable of having whatever safeguarding measures they've got in place, whatever their processes. Um, policies and everything that they have in place. They just have to prove that they can have day-to-day control. That's essentially it.
Somebody give me a mic, thank you. Um, so, eh, but is there an expectation then of, of being on site with a certain regularity in, in, in the duties of a DPS?
Well, there is. Well, there is and there isn't. Sam, you might be able to help me with this. If you have got day-to-day control of that premises, you have to prove that you've got day-to-day control of the premises. It doesn't state anywhere that you have to be in that premises for X amount of hours a day or a week or whatever. But you just have to be able to prove that you've got the measure, whatever necessary measures in place. If I went to inspect a premises, I would, I would expect to be able to speak to the DPS, either in person or that they would be there within minutes of me being there. That's personally, that, that, again, that's, we've said this before, it's a matter of opinion, but there's a lot of grey areas in the legislation which are open to interpretation, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's it for me.
I think as well, sorry, just to add, councillor Otten, they don't have to have on the site presence all the time, so it's to oversee the alcohol sales and they are ultimately the person responsible for all alcohol sales. So if there is something wrong, if they are selling to underage children, it would be them that are prosecuted and held accountable for it. But it's not expected that they would oversee every single alcohol sale, provided there's somebody that's a personal licence holder on site. And that's, that's deemed sufficient, but whether they are competent to run a number of present, pre- premises at the same time would, would be a matter for you.
Just a couple of things from me. Firstly, uh, going back to the legislation, you know, we're confident that you advertised this, this application correctly. But did, did you at any stage consider going over and above that, perhaps talking to local residents or, you know, putting a flyer out or contacting representative groups in the area?
No, we have not.
And, and subsequently, you, you've seen the, the objections that have been raised. Have you had any consideration of, of actually prior to this meeting, having a talk with, with, with any of the objectives? Just, just to see whether a compromise could be reached on any, any of these issues?
I have not tried to meet any because I don't have any details of them anyway. So we just, we come through chain everything, yeah.
And you say you've got a lot of experience and, and you've not had any sort of problems running premises. How, how would you manage to address issues of people hanging around outside the building? Causing nuisance, causing perhaps distress to other people. How would you handle that sort of situation?
We have a policy, a policy called non-confrontation, is, is a company policy. And, and obviously it's following, uh, challenge twenty-five, just identify, uh, and challenging, uh, if any, anybody look under twenty-five. And, and refusing and, 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 and record them into the refusal lock. Uh, and if there is any antisocial behaviour happens within the premises, we call the police. And, or again, we, we just, uh, do the incident report and just follow it through, uh, everything. Hardly we haven't had much of it, obviously. And the staff are well trained to, uh, deal with them, uh, uh, very amicably. So, uh, eh, eh, I, I ha, I, I, I can't, can't recall much of, uh, because the Meadowhead is a B C S to the roundabout and the B C S sites, we open twenty-four hours through the door, not the night window. So occasionally we, we have a problem, but, uh, we always work with police, uh, uh, to just, uh, just, uh, sort things out, yeah.
Uh, one, one of the things you mentioned as a way of meeting the licensing objectives is your staff training. Following on from Joe's point that you may be at several places, uh, at, at any one time. What, what does that training involve? What, what will you be training the staff in?
Training listing about, uh, uh, just, uh, just, um, uh, uh, because when, when you work in the night, it's only one, one cashier, so the safety is, 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 is important and the priority. So like the confronta- confrontation is, uh, non-confrontation is not arguing, uh, or just, uh, just making things worse. So just understand the situation. If somebody's drunk and he's refused to leave the premises, so they, they always call the police. Uh, and if someone is underage or the proxy purchase is trying to happen, it's always, it's trying to be, uh, argument or aggressive behaviour. So the staffs are well trained. There's online programmes like what I have done on here. So they always call the police. In the certain cases, it's something about their control. And, and the priority is they are not selling alcohol, any age restricted product, those conditions. And all the records are being, uh, recorded on, on challenge twenty-five and refusal lock. And, uh, and it's being communicated to me and is, is, if necessary, is, is, is going to be escalated further.
Uh, this has been pointed out and as anyone who's been to that area knows, it is a very busy area. There is a lot of traffic, limited parking. I just want to, have you thought about how you would manage deliveries to the shop?
I, I don't think that the traffic situation is going to get better, uh, because it's, it's not controlled by us. It, it's a commuter. So the, uh, the, the only thing I think, I, I believe that it's, it's a top-up shop, it's not going to be a supermarket style or it's not. It's like, it's a basic, a basic, uh, needs. The people buy, uh, bread, milk and obviously the groceries. Uh, uh, um, I am not going to contribute any, any, any to traffic, uh, uh, situation because the staff is not going to be allowed to park and we have ample place at the back. Uh, so we, we, we can park it, uh, within the premises at the back, yeah. So we have, we have, we have, we have space. And, uh, but, uh, the rest of them is going to be a general traffic. And, um, of being open a new shop, uh, I can't, I can't believe that the traffic is going to be worse because of that opening a new shop. Uh, I, I don't, I agree with that at all.
Uh, just finally from me, I think, eh, have you considered changing anything in this application as a result of what you've seen in, in, in the objections and what you've heard today?
I don't think I have anything necessarily because I have followed all the requirements and how to, how to just forward all the applications and what are the documents and everything. So I, uh, having this means a place is, I only believe that I am going to be a responsible retailer, just within everything, uh, within the legal, uh, legal control. And I'm just one among, you know, the normal people just looking for opportunities. So, uh, I don't think I will change anything, uh, 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 on this application.
Sam, is, is there anything you'd like to ask the applicants?
Just similar to what I asked, um, the residents as well. In terms of alcohol sales, you've submitted the plan. Um, which is, is actually one that we can read for once, so thank you for that. It's usually the quite tricky. So you've got behind the counter, is that sort of the tobacco?
Sprits and sprits in twelve, yeah.
Yeah, and then next to that, you've got the fridges.
Yeah.
As well. So what sort of percentage do you anticipate the alcohol forming?
You mean the, on the, on the floor, or?
Um, yeah.
Uh, sorry, can you repeat that, on, on the?
Yeah, so in terms of the shop, what, how much of the shop would be alcohol sales? Sort of like twenty percent, fifty percent?
Normal trend is what, uh, when it comes to four quarties, it's going to be different. But the average industry trend is like, um, tobacco is twenty-five to thirty and alcohol is normally like around twenty.
And would you anticipate the business being viable? Would it work or be successful without alcohol?
That's why I think I'm, I'm taking the risk. Uh, but comp- competition is everywhere. I'm not scared of competition. Uh, I believe that having that experience, uh, I know this market, uh, uh, how, how, um, um, how fast changing and, uh, I, I believe that I can offer a good, uh, uh, good prices and, uh, uh, a good combination of products, uh, based on, based on the people's requirement. So I, I believe that I think I should be able to survive.
Okay, but if you didn't have the alcohol licence, would you still be looking to open the business? Would you still think it could be?
I, I need to, I need to think, I need to, I need to think based on, based on the decisions taken today, yeah.
So it's a general convenience store, so like you said, like milk, bread, household items, that sort of thing is, is the main.
Yeah.
Focus. Thank you, Chair.
Can I ask, I'll show you don't, but on the off chance, do the interested parties have any questions for the applicants? And do this in any, any order you wish.
Just like to make a comment, um, due respect to a guy that can run a.
Try and, try and phrase it as a question. You will have the opportunity to sort of put the end.
Know that I haven't.
This is specific questions for the applicants, but you have got the chance to come in after the questions. Are there any? Yeah.
Sorry. The gentleman said he runs petrol stations. The demographics of a petrol station and a local shop off licence is completely different. It's light and day.
Sorry, I, I worked in, I worked in. No, no, probably he's mistaken because I work in, uh, uh, shop, I manage small size shop, also off licence shop, uh, in different areas in the country, yeah.
Oh, so he does. I thought it was just petrol stations. So secondly, um, DPS in two or three places, um, you, you can be. Obviously, there's loads of DPSs for the big stores, they've got ten, fifteen, but that's not going to work in, in our community here. It's a little shop that is opening up. It's good, it's in a local community. It'll, it'll have to be hands, hands-on. Secondly, with all these questions, I haven't seen any due diligence. I haven't seen him mention a record book of refusals. I haven't even seen, heard him say that. Um, he'll, um, he'll do his alcohol, um, due diligence with the staff. Obviously, you can't be in three places. It, it's not put any confidence in me. Um, regards to the shop demographics, it's a small shop. You're going to walk into that shop, doors open, you're going to see the off licence. It can't be hidden, the space is not there. The other thing is, it's on a mo- moral issue as well.
Sorry, we're just, just sticking to questions like the chair said, you will be able to come back at the end to some more, but it's purely just questions of. Sorry, we're just, just sticking to questions like the chair said, you will be able to come back at the end to some more, but it's purely just questions of the applicant.
Well, this is a question basically, sorry. Here's a question, why, why he's not done that basically, you know? Why, why did he not have his record books? You know, when the question was asked, what he's going to do, he's, he's, he's not, it is a question. Secondly is, um. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, I manage a small size off licences anyway. So, well, I, I know that the layout and where, where, where the ideal, uh, um, uh, to have a licence. And he said he, he has, uh, he has a designated places where, where the childrens are not attracted. So, uh, I, I, I worked, worked with different shop fitters, uh, uh, well known shop fitters. Although I, I have a, I have a, a conversation with them, uh, to find, find the best, best layout. And obviously the priority is to have an off licence. Uh, uh, it's not in the side to the, the young people to, to get attracted. Um, or what else are questions? And, and the due diligence, I, yeah, I have, I have worked in so many organisations. I, I have a very strong due diligence, so I can introduce the best, uh, to the, even the small size and they follow it. And all the authorities can, it can be checked. And, and obviously that's, that's, as I said, that's a priority. So, uh, the shop will be run, uh, uh, with, with, uh, with, uh, uh, with all these alcohol, uh, licence objectives and, and all the, all the legal objectives.
Sorry, same question again. He's still failed to, uh, acknowledge the question I'm asking. It's not, the licence is not about, um, uh, it, it, what it's about is what can he do to prevent children buying alcohol? Firstly, it's about money because if it's myself, I wouldn't open up a off licence two doors away from school. But my main thing is you have to keep records, you have to train your staff. The alcohol, the council have got a really big, um, book on how alcohol sales should be done. Under eighteen, ten, under eighteen people served. There, there's nothing that is mentioned in that incident. That's even after, after the question, it's still not, I don't think he's going to have that.
I, I mentioned it, that's, that's, that, that all, all the staff, uh, will be, will be trained. And, uh, that, that's the priority. I mean, if a staff sell, uh, alcohol to that rate, is, I'm in trouble. So it's all, or it's, 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 it's going to damage my business. The priority is all staff is going to be trained and all the, all the, all the legal records is going to be maintained. And, and it's, it's going to be kept, uh, uh, to, to, uh, to, to everyone, to all, all authority to check it. And, uh, that's the priority. I mean, I, as I said, I, 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 I work in, I work for, uh, different companies. They, they follow this, uh, due diligence and obviously the legal compliances. And I, I'm, I'm going to maintain, maintain it. Staff was going to be trained and, and I'm bearing a challenge twenty five watch. I'm going to provide all the staff. I think most, none of the, none of the, none of the off licence shops, they're wearing this one. I go to his shop, they're not wearing this one. I go to spa, they, they don't wear this one. You have, you have to just wear this one.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Still, um, the answer still didn't give me confidence, but, um, but the, um, issues, when you said, uh, that the gentleman, uh, did he make any effort to go to other places? He's been in my store, he's had a good look around, there was another gentleman with him.
No leaflet being handed.
Um, no, he didn't mention who he was, um, uh.
Not even local shops, forgot about our one, because it's even local shops, anybody, local resident, nobody knew. We had pizza, Papa Jones Pizza open, they apply for food permission, they handed the, they handed the leaflet to all the local businesses. Thus we're going to open everything. In this one, we didn't hear anything at all.
So my main issue is this again, it comes down to his question. It's a question basically. The law is one thing, you have to go beyond the law in an off licence. To, for a community like a close community we've got in Abbey Lane, if we don't have that, um, it's not going to work. When he says that he's, uh, going to phone the police, the police don't come. You know, I'm going in confidence that he's going to stop the nuisance that's going to happen. And it will happen out two doors away from the school. I haven't got any confidence with it. I have a record, I have records in my shop, I have other records where all incidents are written down. All the staff are trained with, with everything, but I still have to be there. Without me there, the staff are not going to do it. They're not even going to say to refuse a guy for alcohol, it just doesn't happen. I can't see how he's going to run three sites and I don't want the gentleman running the site on Abbey Lane when, um, he don't give me any confidence to be honest. Sorry for, um.
I think just to clarify, you, you did actually say the applicant whilst putting his case forward that he would have an incident and a report log and that staff would be trained to complete these. As part of the application, he has put that as a condition. There are quite detailed conditions that the applicant has offered. Should the licence be granted, they will go on that. And then, as you yourself will know, they are legally enforceable. So to not comply with those, as you will know as well, would be breaking the law. So officers from the licensing service and trading standards regularly go around licence premises, do the test purchases, do inspections, check compliance with the licence. And where they are found to be falling short, they, they do come here, they do come before the committee. So the, the position we're at is that he, he has sort of said that that would be the case and he's put his conditions forward. So it, it will be over to members now to determine how, how they go on that.
Yeah, that's fine. Sorry, mine was just, uh, it's a little bit more than that.
Yeah, no, I take your point.
It's not, it's not just, uh, what it is, it's, it's, it's a lot more, a lot more involvement in there. You know, like going outside, checking, make sure that there's someone else being served. He's not going to be there. That's what my issues, not, not what his representation is, is going to be for an off licence, you have to have a representation.
I think much like we take you all at your word, we, we have to take the applicant at his word. And it's, it's a balancing exercise as well, yeah.
Yeah, my question is, you'd run two garages, Meadowhead and also down by the retail park, probably a mile and a half between. Do you think it's feasible to open another beer off and sell in full products? When we've got Sid there, we've got Asda, we've got Morrison's in between, plus other shops down in Woodseats, selling exactly the same thing? I don't think that you're going to make money. And you mentioned that you've, you also run another shop. Whereabouts were the other shop, the other beer off?
It's not shop, it's two, I'm, I'm just managing, I'm just managing. That's a franchise, it's not my company, uh, there's no job security, I might lose the job, yeah? So I'm just looking for my own business, this is my question.
I thought you did say that.
I'm not owning any business at the moment, I'm not owning any business. It's a, it's a commission operator, so.
Thank you.
It's under, under a franchise.
Thanks for that.
Could I just ask the gentleman to explain to everybody how he intends to restock his shop?
Yeah, we, we, that's why I said, mentioned that we have ample place at the back, it's the back area. All the deliveries is going to be their type, the quiet type. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be just delivered through the back area, it's not on the front area. We're not going to park, park at the front area.
What, what road are you going to park on then please?
Uh, what road is that? Harboard Road.
Oh, so you didn't know the name of the road, yeah, that's the road I live on. You're not going to get stuck down there, it's too narrow.
There's a space going to the back. I, I looked at it, there's a, there's a space, no one can block the space because it's, 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 it's an entrance. No one can park it, so we can just park it through the door and we can just restock it through the, through the back area. Uh, sorry, I, I can't remember the area, uh, the road, but I, I have seen that, I looked at it. There's, there's ample place.
And what if you can't get on the road, where are you going to, if you can't park on the road, where are you going to park?
No, no, we are, we can just drive through the door, through the door, not, not the main road. So it's going to be a quiet time, not the traffic time. So I'm not going to get delivery every day, probably twice, twice, twice a week or something. It's going to be during the non-big time. So I'm going to drive through the road and go into the back area, restock.
So my understanding from what you've said is, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
You're going to park on Harboard Road?
Yeah. No, we're going to go inside, not park. We have a space to go drive inside into back of the area.
Can you, uh, uh, there's no.
There, there's, there's a, a space at the back area.
Next to the garage.
You can't park there.
Why not?
You can't drive through there.
You can't drive in.
So you want me, I live three doors.
He's a landlord, he asks me, yes, you can drive in.
There's a garage.
Yeah, there's a garage, yeah.
Yeah, which you can't park outside of. Yeah?
Well, you have to leave it free at all times, so.
Well, there's a line there.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that's what it means. Correct me if I'm wrong.
But we are not going to use the front lane, but they are taking all the deliveries on the, on, through the, through the main door, isn't it? On, on the main road, that's far away, you'll park on the main road.
I understand that, yeah, you've explained it. I'm not contesting it, I'm just asking you. When you've got the delivery to be made, where are you going to pull up with your vehicle to take the goods out of the vehicle to deliver to your shop?
Yeah, through the back, back area.
Which road are you going to park?
What's the road called?
Harboard Road.
Harboard Road, yeah.
And you say you're not going to do that at very busy times?
Yes.
What are the busy times please?
Probably during like ten, after ten to twelve.
So your intention is to do deliveries between ten o'clock at night?
No, 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 no. Ten o'clock in the morning and twelve o'clock where the, where the school is all.
Okay. And your intention is to get goods out of the vehicle?
Yeah.
And deliver around the back?
Yeah.
Of the shop rather than the front?
That's right, yeah. We're not going to have any big wagon or anything like that.
Sorry.
Or the risk assessment will be made to make sure that safety is a first.
Any further questions for the applicant? If, if not, then would the interested parties like to sum up? I know you, you had a point that you wished to make, you need to sum it up.
It was very basic, real like, uh, if this guy is running two twenty four hour franchises, um, and plans to open this one, he, he's a great time manager. But the, the other businesses he has got where he is not getting the trouble and the problems, he may not be running the petrol station, but they're situated in petrol stations and neither are right in the middle of a residential area by the side of a school. That's my summary. Okay.
Any further points in, in, in summing up? Obviously you've been very clear in, in putting your case across, but is there anything else you, you want to point out before we give the applicants a chance to sum up? Yeah, just mine, obviously I've got that interest, I've got a bit emotional. I've got a bit emotional. I mean, the gentleman's been fine to be honest, he's answered a lot of the questions and stuff. I've got no animosity against him. My, only my main point is the school. You know, if it was me, I wouldn't open up an off licence next to two doors next to the school. I'm not running three shops, I'm not going to be a DPS for free. It's not, that area is not for that basically. The main thing mine is the nuisance it's going to cause for school kids going past them. And now school kids think about alcohol, cigarettes, um, under ten. I mean, why are we doing all these advertising bands and stuff? And why are you granting an off licence? Why are we granting an off licence three doors away from the school? Tobacco, soon as someone comes in to buy tobacco from the shop, he buys a tobacco, he's rolling it outside the shop. It's, it's three doors away from the school, that's my main reason. Secondly, it's going to affect my business, I'm a bit worried about that. But my main reason is the nuisance it's going to cause the school, it's too close to the school. Anyone with any morals who's going to open up a shop will not open it up for off licence with two doors away from school. Oh, that's all, sorry. You have nothing to apologise for this morning, so. It's a bit emotional. Is, is there anything else, anyone else would like to say something?
I would like to mention that Sid's shop is probably seventy five, eighty yards away from this proposed shop opening. So there's a beer off within seventy five, eighty yards. He's struggling with that. I can't see where this gentleman can make money out of a beer off. And Sid's struggling with it already.
We can't see any positives. If there are some positives, please let us know. But we can't see any positives for the area coming out of this shop.
I think when you look at the individual elements that everybody's discussed, I think you can find holes in even our counter arguments in our objections. You can find holes in my representation that the process of getting where we are from then to where we are now is antiquated and ridiculous. Okay, fair enough. When you look at the individual elements and you put them all together, you have to stand back with a degree of morality and say to yourself, is this the right thing to do? Is it really? Like I said, come and see and say to yourself, if these were my grandkids or my kids coming out of school, if I lived in this area, would I want this happening? Is it the right thing to do? We know the answer to that, but it's our answer. You have to look at it from a different perspective. You have to provide a more balanced approach to it. But just, you just have to ask yourself that, is it the right thing to do? I can't see any more really. Oh, thank you, that's helpful. And now I give the applicant the opportunity to sum up your application. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us before we, we come to a decision on this?
Yeah, as I said, nothing, nothing I'm going to add on. As I said before, I, I take it as an opportunity to me because, uh, I'm just managing two, uh, two twenty four hours, uh, uh, service station under franchise, it's not my business. So I'm just getting only the commission. So been working for a long time, long hours, seven days. Uh, so I have a kid, so you know, I, I need to think about my future. I need to, I need to think about something, you know, on my own and just working for others for a long time. So I take this as an opportunity. I make sure that, uh, all the legal compliances and obviously the alcohol objectives are my priorities. Uh, and, and make sure that, uh, I will, I will, uh, these are my priority. Thank you.
So Jane, could we have the options please?
Certainly can. So the options available to the committee this morning are to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Thank you. Could I ask you to now leave with the licensing officer while we take legal advice and come to a decision? And if you're staying in the building, as soon as we make that decision, we'll invite you back in and tell you what that is. I better put my microphone on, I'm sure this gets audience of millions. But anyway, it's been a difficult decision, but the decision that the licensing committee has come up to, up with is that we're going to grant the application but subject to one additional condition. And that condition will be to the effect that there will be no alcohol displayed in the shop window, nor any alcohol promotions advertised in the window of the shop. Now, the, the reason we've granted today and we've come to that decision despite some very valid points made by yourself is, one, the licensing act is a presumptive piece of legislation. It presumes that premises will be managed appropriately and suitably unless there's evidence to suggest otherwise. Now whilst people may think it's common sense that people congregate and cause nuisance outside this premises, there's no evidence to suggest that it's happening. There are quite clearly a number of problems in the area with parking and, and various things and traffic. But that's not the responsible of this licence holder and we don't think that, given how busy it is now, that it can have much more of an impact on it. Uh, and in terms of the safeguarding of children, well, they're currently going into another shop where alcohol is, is already on sale. So if we were going to do something about that here, then we'd have to look about doing it in any shop where, where children might go. And I don't think we're at a stage where we'd like to do that across the city at the moment. Obviously, in terms of, well, both of you, because we've, we've applied an additional condition and because we've rejected your, your objections, you both have the opportunity to appeal, which Sam will detail in a second. But I will also say about licences, uh, and this is keys, whilst the legislation is very presumptive in terms of granting them, where it comes into its own i- is that if we could grant this licence today, if you could evidence problems from that premises tomorrow. if you could evidence problems from that premises tomorrow, that licence can go back here, we can review it in light of that evidence and we can take a very different decision, either impose more stringent conditions or revoke the licence. You know, a licence isn't granted forever, it's granted for as long as a premises is managed responsibly. And what I would also like to say is that this is a strong community. These people have come today because they care about the area in which they live. If you're going to be part of that community, I can't condition you to do this, but I would ask you to talk to them, to engage. And, you know, if, if things aren't working out or, or if there are issues, chat before you come here, have a talk, see if you can resolve them. And it might be that you can actually come to a happy medium here. And, and again, the other thing, whilst there were suggestions this will impact on other businesses, it's not a licensing objective, we can't take that into account, so it's just, you know, we, we make a moral choice. Well, we can't have to make a legal choice at this meeting and whatever we feel personally about it, that's, that's how we've come to that decision. So that's the decision of licensing subcommittee and Sam will, will just detail the, the rights of appeal.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I think you've covered the, the position well there. So following the hearing, all parties will receive a notice, just summarising the evidence that was before the committee today, how the committee came to that decision and the final condition that will be worded that will go on the licence as well as the others that you proposed when you applied. So as the chair said, you've both got the rights of appeal because we've imposed a condition on your licence, you could appeal against that. And for you and the other parties that attended today, you could appeal the committee's decision. So with that notice, you would have twenty-one days to submit the appeal to the magistrate's court in Sheffield. They'd essentially sit as members have done today, look at all the evidence before them at that time and decide whether the decision to grant the licence with that condition was wrong at that time. But as the chair said, hopefully, you know, if there are issues, these can be resolved by communication. I think it's, it's often very understated how effective communication can be and that certainly works both ways. So hopefully going forward, that can be constructive. But thank you to you and for everybody who came today. I know people have given up a lot of time and they do have businesses to run and lives to lead, so it is appreciated, thank you.
Come to that conscience, it's, it's, it's about not displaying any, any alcohol promotions or any alcohol-related, um, communication, isn't it? So what, what if, just say that what these shops offers, the categories like groceries, off licence? And so are we, are we allowed to mention that or we cannot mention off licence at all?
We did discuss this, so we probably couldn't stop you, in, in your overall sign saying grocery and off licence, but it was just because children are walking past that, that shop.
So you made, you made sure of the alcohol product and then that's, that's why something is...
We didn't want them to see obvious signs of alcohol, but obviously you, you can put an accurate sign up confirming what your business is.
What we offer, yeah.
You know, you've probably seen the shops where it's almost like two bottles of wine for ten pounds, there's a big colourful sign, that's what we wanted to avoid, yeah?
Thank you very much, thanks for your time.
We had a chat outside actually, obviously it's admirable. No one has anything against him and his business and I'm glad that it's, it's been passed for him. I just hope it survives, that he can make a go of it. I'm not, still not convinced about the parking and how you're going to get your goods in.
I will, I will make sure that we are not going to contribute anything to that.
You'll find a big problem is people parking, especially through the day, it's always...
I will, I will make sure, any issues, okay, you can just come down.
That's fine, so I wish you well for the future.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
Whatever, whatever you're doing in your life, it's great.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And can I, can I thank you for using the term beer off, which I had to explain to some of the younger members of the committee and, you know?